Good morning. We call the meeting into order for legislative session 2018-14 of Wycomico County Council, June 19, 2018. Those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge Allegiance, please do.
(Inaudible). How we done, how we done on earth as it is now, given us this day and every day, and forgiveness our trespasses, as we can be able to trespass against us, and we do not do temptations, but deliver us new, uh, power and glory forever. Amen.
(Inaudible).
To the flag of the United States of America, to the pure and holy Georgia stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask, we would like to have a moment of silence if we could for Mr. David McLeod. He was a council member for four years of Wycomico County Council. He passed away recently. We would just like to have a moment of silence out of respect. Thank you.
First item on the agenda, entertain a motion from council to approve the legislative minutes from June 5, 2018.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from May 15 in reference to fiscal year 2017 audit follow-up.
So move.
Second? Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from May 15 in reference to stormwater management update.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Minutes are approved. First item we have on the agenda, the first two items we have on the agenda are proclamations. The first proclamation is going to be from Wycomico County Humane Society, and the second proclamation is for Savannah Brooks. So this is going to be interesting. I'm going to go over to the podium. We're going to do the proclamation for the Humane Society first, if you'll bear with me. Mr. Bassama, how are you?
Good. Good morning. Good to have you here. Appreciate the really hard work you're doing. Mr. Bassama's doing really great work with the Humane Society, as well as taking on the additional burden of helping us to completely rework our animal ordinances in Wycomico County, and I think we're very close to being there, and we wouldn't have gotten there without your help and with the help of the committee. And of course, this is more particular to the actual organization that you have as well, the Humane Society and the great work you're doing there. Let me read it, and it has a few whereas's. We're going to take some of these out, no more than three from now. This is a proclamation, 2018 Animal Rights Awareness Week, Humane Society of Wycomico County. Whereas Animal Rights Awareness Week originated in 1999 to help raise awareness of animal rights by educating the public about the basic needs of animals around the world and advocate for the humane and compassionate treatment of all animals. And whereas animal rights awareness extends to all animals, including pets, farm animals, and wildlife, as all animals enrich our lives in countless ways. And whereas for over 40 years, the Humane Society of Wycomico County has provided temporary shelter for the county's homeless and unwanted animals and does not turn any animal away. And whereas the Humane Society of Wycomico County keeps all adoptable animals until they are adopted by a loving forever home. And whereas the Humane Society of Wycomico County works to make a difference in the lives of animals and the people who love and care for them, and is dedicated to relieving the pain and suffering of animals through education and direct intervention, therefore be it resolved that the Wycomico County Council honors the Humane Society of Wycomico County during Animal Rights Awareness Week and thanks them for their service and dedication to our community, done this 19th day of June 2018. Thank you very much. Thank you. And we have a very special guest this morning, Savannah Brooks. Where are you? There you are. Grab me a chair. Can I put you on a chair? Do you mind? Do you mind? I don't want to embarrass you. I don't think you embarrass me. You can step up here if you want to. There you go. Now we're all upside down, right? Savannah's done great things in Wycomico County, and she has, we have a nationwide award winner here, nationwide. Is that right?
Yes.
Very good. This is a proclamation from Wycomico County Council. And I must say, this is the youngest person I have ever given a proclamation to, ever. Congratulations. I don't think anyone's ever walked in here as young as you are. Fantastic. You're welcome. Here we go. Savannah Brooks, National Think Kindness Speech Contest winner. Whereas Savannah Brooks, a fifth grade student at North Salisbury School, started a kind kids' club at her school to help other students learn how to be kind to others. And whereas Think Kindness, a nonprofit organization inspiring measurable acts of kindness in schools and communities around the world, held a national Think Kindness speech contest, receiving over 90 submissions. And whereas Savannah Brooks entered the National Think Kindness Speech Contest by submitting a video speech titled "Kindness Can Change a Nation." And whereas the Think Kindness narrowed the speech submissions down to 10 finalists and allowed the public to vote nationwide to determine the winner. And whereas after a nationwide vote, Savannah Brooks was elected as the National Think Kindness Speech Contest winner and awarded $2,500, oh my gosh, to use on a project of her choice. And whereas Savannah Brooks plans to use her award on four different kindness projects in Wycomico County to inspire and educate others on acts of kindness in our community. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council is pleased to congratulate Savannah Brooks for being chosen as the National Think Kindness Speech Contest winner, done this 19th day of June 2018. So, here we go. Congratulations. You're welcome. Do y'all want to get a picture? There we go. You need to bend down some so you're not... No, it's okay.
(Inaudible).
Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
Um...
Just...
I don't know. Just thanks to everybody that voted for me, because it really means a lot. And I'm really excited to be receiving this, because nothing like this has really ever happened before, and I'm really excited to make a change in Salisbury.
Great. Perfect. I have to tell you, Savannah, Mark Kilmer was asking me whether or not you were in his district, because he's getting nervous. Thank you very much. There's your award. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark does a lot. He deserves that every once in a while. Good morning, Mrs. Hurley.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 64-2018 in support of application for funds from the Maryland Small Cities Community Development Block Rent Program for the listed projects. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held this morning at 10:00 a.m. I had been requested to read the public hearing notice into the record for the projects listed. The first one states, "A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 19, 2018, at 10:00 a.m. in the Government Office Building 125 North Division Street, Room 301, to obtain the views of citizens on community economic development and housing needs to be considered for submission of application to the SFY 2019 Maryland Community Development Block Rent Program. Citizens will be furnished with information including, but not limited to, one, the amount of CDBG funds available for the state fiscal year 2019, which is $350,000 for housing rehab and $300,000 for down payment assistance; two, the range of activities that may be undertaken with the CDBG funds; and three, the proposed projects under consideration by Wycomico County. The Maryland Community Development Block Rent Project is a federally funded program designed to assist governments with activities directed toward neighborhood and housing revitalization, economic development, and improved community facilities and services. It is administered by the Department of Housing and Community Development. The Maryland CDBG program reflects the state's economic and community development priorities and provides public funds for activities which meet the following national objectives: In accordance with the Federal Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, that, one, benefit low to moderate income persons and households; two, aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight; three, meet other community development needs of a urgent nature or that are an immediate threat to community and health and welfare. All enlisted persons are encouraged to attend. The proposed grant application can be reviewed at the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development in the Government Office Building, Room 203, through June 18, 2018. The second part is to provide information on the progress of the Down Payment Closing Costs Assistant Program, which is a federally funded program designed to assist governments with activities directed toward neighborhood and housing revitalization, economic development, and improved community facilities and services. Council did have a work session on these projects at its last meeting, and we do have Lori Carter here, Deputy Director of Housing, our Planning, Zoning, and Community Development, and Cheryl Meadows, Executive Director of Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Services.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 64-2018. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please. State your name and your county of residence. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 64-2018. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 64-2018.
So move.
Second? Any discussion? I know we've had a work session on this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a presentation...
Thank you, Mrs. Carter, and thank you, Ms. Meadows.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation by Yvonne Lomax, Youth Program Coordinator of the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance.
Good morning, Ms. Lomax.
Good morning, Council. How are you doing today?
Good, thank you.
My name is Yvonne Lomax. I work for Lower Shore Workforce Alliance. I'm a youth program coordinator there, and I also would like to share with you a little bit about our youth strategic plan that we have in place. And we're also a part of the tri-county division, so we're going to be representing three counties. So...
Ms. Lomax?
Yes.
Why don't you come over here? It seems like you're so far, unless you want to be over there.
Oh, okay.
It just seems like you're so far away.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep. So the purpose of this short presentation is to share with you our three-year strategic plan at Lower Shore Workforce Alliance. Our mission is to identify the gaps in services to develop strategies to coordinate youth policies to put in place, also quality services and community partnerships throughout our three counties. Of the youth strategic plan, it's a supplement from the local plan, which will create the framework for the local operations of WIOA under the Title I Youth Program. Our goals for this strategic plan is to increase awareness in our youth programs, and we're going to directly meet the disconnected youth ages 16 to 24. We would like to increase our employer engagement with workforce development education systems and also increase base training to develop like a job readiness component to prepare our youth for the workforce, also to provide youth with stackable credentials needing to meet the demands in the modern business, especially for the three counties. Our strategic plan is to echo the youth standing committee's primary functions. We have a youth standing committee and a youth standing advisory committee at Lower Shore Workforce Alliance that we hold monthly and quarterly to generate and impact our businesses and our modern development throughout the committees. Also, we input and generate a lot of the stakeholders at the federal, state, and local levels to support this effort. In order to address all the needs for the residents of all three counties, we ensure appropriate allocations of funds. The Board requested a subcommittee and recommendations of fund formula for out-of-school youth programs provision. On March 14, 2018, the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance Development Board approved the formula for funding youth programs as described in our youth strategic plan, so hopefully you got a chance to read that. If you would like to look at our youth strategic plan, it's on our website, lowershoreworkforcealliance.org, and also our local plan is there as well. Using this formula, we ensure the residents of all lower, all three Lower Shore counties to receive services in a fair and consistent manner based on the related data. The data that we use for the analysis regional, for the regional, would be data points like labor force, population, poverty, and unemployment rates. These are just the data that we had sort of calculated in our subgroups, but we are always going to continue evaluating, and we'll continue evaluating the need depending on the three county areas. The Lower Shore Workforce Alliance will use local WIOA funds for the out-of-school youth programs through the tri-county area, but please don't think that we're going to take away from our in-school youth. We'll continue to fund them with alternative funding sources when available, such as the Rural Maryland Prosperity Grant, which is through the tri-county council, and our representative there is Mike Pinneton, and also the Summer Youth Connection Funds will come from the state, and that's something that will allocate to our in-school youth or any valuable resources from there. I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to just inform you guys about our three-year strategic plan, and we hope that if you have any questions or anything moving forward when it comes to the formula or any fundings that we're distributing through our counties, please contact Lower Shore Workforce Alliance or the Division of the tri-county council. Thank you for your time.
Any questions from councilors? You're talking about local community stakeholders. What stakeholders are you looking, are you looking towards in Wycomico County?
It's mostly the vendors that we work with. We sub-grant our funds out, so those would be the individuals that are serving the out-of-school youth population, which is the disconnected youth from 16 to 24.
Right.
And those individuals will apply for an RFP for the funding, so those are the individuals for the three counties that are working in that youth population.
The vendors apply for an RFP?
They apply, yes. We sub-grant our funds out to the counties, and there's an RFP that's put in place through the Division, the tri-county council. So we go through a procurement process, and they would be, we usually release those, that information through the counties, and then they would be able to apply for the funding.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good. Well, we appreciate you taking the time to be here and the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good week.
You too.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Resolution Number 65-2018, proposing the amendment of various sections of the Wycomico County Charter. Council has had several work sessions and a public hearing on the proposed charter amendments. There are two amendments being considered in this resolution. The first one is to amend Section 315 of the Charter, titled Confirmation of Appointments, to add that the initial appointment of the Assistant Director of Administration and Deputy Directors are subject to confirmation by county council. The second proposed charter amendment is to Section 708, titled Transfer of Appropriations and Capital Assets, Enter Fund Borrowing. The amendment has two parts. The first part provides that the county council is to be notified at least 15 days in advance, except in an emergency, of any transfers between general classifications of expenditures within the same department or office. If it is an emergency, then a notice is to be given as soon as possible, but no later than five days after the transfer. The second part of the amendment is to add a letter C to Section 708 that says, "A depreciable capital asset having a current book value of $15,000 or more, regardless of when and how acquired, may be transferred between departments, agencies, offices, or funds, only upon written recommendation of the county executive and approval by the county council. The recommendation shall describe the asset and state its current book value and the reasons for the transfer. Other than real estate or any other items designated by resolution of the county council, a depreciable capital asset may not be used regularly, except under extraordinary circumstances by a department, agency, or fund, unless it is purchased or otherwise acquired for or subsequently transferred to such user."
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 65-2018. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Point of information, Mr. President. If, from what I understand of the charter, this has to be approved by five votes of the council.
I'm not sure about that, John. It's a resolution. It's not a legislative bill. Is that correct, Mrs. Hurley?
Yes.
I'm not in favor of this, and since we don't have a full council here, if it's defeated today with lack of moving on, then it will not be brought back.
Are you suggesting a table?
I would recommend that someone else table. Now, this is, this is just for point of information that I'm looking for. I think I'm correct.
I appreciate that, Councilman Hall. We have a motion table from Councilman Joe Holliday.
I'll second that.
And a second. All those in favor? Opposed?
No.
I do want to say that I appreciate Mr. Hall's sense of fair play in noting that, bringing that up, even though you're opposed to it. It's good to, it was working together well.
Good job.
Thank you, Councilman Hall. Mrs. Hurley?
Okay. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 66-2018, declaring that Green Street Housing LLC, located 212 East Main Street, Suite 200, Salisbury, Maryland, is eligible to receive enterprise-owned benefits, and we have Mrs. Laura Soper here, enterprise-owned administrator with the city of Salisbury.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 66-2018.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions of council, Ms. Soper? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 66-2018 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Good morning, Mr. Taylor. How are you?
Good morning. Two items this morning. The first is for adoption. Second reading Legislative Bill 2018-06, an act to add Chapter 13, titled County Internal Auditor, to the Wycomico County Code to clarify the powers and duties of the county internal auditor and to include regulatory provisions related to the conduct of audits. There was a public hearing on this.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Entertained a motion to adopt Legislative Bill 2018-06.
Some move?
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
We've, in our last session, I'd brought up a desire to add some penalties to this. I appreciate the work that our attorney and our council administrator have done on this. There was not really a workable way to do that, so I'm all withdrawn. Any suggestion to do that and just proceed with the bill as written, but I appreciate the work that they put into it to try to find a way to do it, but it just, in the time, it just didn't seem like a workable way to do it, so...
All right. Thank you, Councilman Kilmer. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting Legislative Bill 2018-06, we'll start with Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Joe Holliday.
Aye.
Councilman John Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Kilmer.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill 2018-06 has been adopted unanimously. Mr. Taylor?
The second item is for introduction, Legislative Bill Number 2018-08, introduced by the President of the Council with the request of the county executive. It is an act to authorize and empower Wycomico County, Maryland, to borrow on the faith and credit of Wycomico County, Maryland, an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $10,504,500, and to evidence such borrowing by the issue and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds of the county, the proceeds thereof to be used by Wycomico County to finance, refinance, or reimburse the costs of certain projects for the Board of Education of Wycomico County and the Sheriff's Office, including costs of planning, design, acquisition, construction, improvement, installation, renovation, rehabilitation, repairing, furnishing, and equipping of land, facilities, buildings, and structures, together with other costs and financing costs related thereto. I will stop reading the header at this point if you, unless you want me to continue, it would probably take another two or three minutes.
I think that suffices. Thank you. We have documentation on the agenda as well, and all the information is in a public briefbook.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Entertained a motion to introduce Legislative Bill 2018-08.
Councilman...
Second. Any discussion from council?
I just wanted to say, given looking down the list, majority of the projects, probably half the money maybe, is for school renovation. So I know we catch a lot of grief sometimes for not spending enough on schools, but as you can see here, most of them are board bid projects.
Thank you, Councilman Holliday. Any other council comments, questions? I'm going to do the introduction on a roll call as well. All those in favor of the introduction of Legislative Bill 2018-08, starting with Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Kilmer?
Aye.
Councilman Holliday?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill 2018-08 has been introduced unanimously. Mrs. Hurley?
We can have the public hearing on that bill on July 17 at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor?
That's it.
Thank you very much. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, please come to the podium, please. State your name and your county of residence and your concern. Good morning.
Can I have this section again?
If you give, yes, just give it to Mr. Davis, and he can pass it. Yeah, he'll pass it.
My name is Linda Langville. I live at 28704 Old Quantico Road, Salisbury. And myself and five other residents are having a huge problem with traffic, also with trash. Quantico, Old Quantico Road used to be two ways, but for years it has only been one way in. There are cars that will come up the wrong way and go out onto Quantico Road, I mean, go out onto Nanicoke Road, and they have shoved me up against the curb twice. One had a boat attached. The speed and the trash problems have, it's been an ongoing thing. When they're going to the landfill, everybody uses Old Quantico Road. If you look at some of the, the picture of the home that's there, that happens to be my house, but I took a picture of that because we are only 40 feet from the road. So when you get tanker trucks, dump trucks, trash trucks, it's not pleasant. And then they drop their trash on the way. The residents who are supposed to cover their trash, they do not do this. And if you look at all the other pictures, you'll see all of the trash that I pick up twice daily. I take it to the dump. I don't see them paying for a dump sticker for me to clean up their trash. There are other, I have included some signs where it says, "No Outlet." When you make that right off of Quant, off of Nanicoke Road to go on to Old Quantico, it says, "No Outlet." People come up there all the time. Pull out onto Nanicoke. People come up there all the time, pull out onto Nanicoke. There are two signs also that says, "Do not enter." There's one on each side of our street. They're not reading this. It's causing a huge problem, a huge problem there. We have asked before for radar to stop the speeding. That's a temporary fix. Several years ago, that was done. It didn't even last a week, and they were already out there speeding. The gentleman that cuts my grass was almost hit out there just three weeks ago. The speed limit is thirty, they do forty, fifty. There's one man that comes down there between six-thirty and quarter to seven every day, he's doing probably sixty, and it's every single day. The permanent solution is not radar. The residents have come up with two resolutions, hopefully. One is for a sign that says, "No commercial trucks." However, that's not going to stop your resident traffic going to the dump. The other one is to put up a cement barrier. We only have four homes there. The other two homes are up the access road next to my house, so they don't get the trash, they get the speeders. It's very hard to pull out of our driveways. There's only four homes that sit right there. I don't understand why we can't just block that off and give us some peace and quiet, and where we don't have to go out twice a day and pick up trash, not just on the road, in our yards. And you see these pictures that I have attached. It's not a little piece of paper. It's not a little piece of paper. And I understand that they don't want to put radar out there because they're commercial trucks. They don't want these guys to get a ticket, they could lose their CDLs. I'm sorry. A life is going to be had over that, and we see, we all see that coming. I've listed the, you know, the people that live on this road, and I've also, on the map, you can see where I've highlighted a little tiny road, Old Quantico. It's only four hundred and seventy-five feet long, from where you turn off of Nanicoke till you get to the end of that, four hundred and seventy-five feet. Why do we need to have all of these huge vehicles coming down this road? And like I said, our houses sit only forty foot off of that road. So we've got a problem, and I would like to know what else, if you have any ideas, we can do about it.
Thank you very much. We will take it in consideration with the Roads Department as well as with the Sheriff's Department, and see what we can do with that. I find it very frustrating, just before you get there, there's another sign, and Bob, you probably see this as well, where it says, "Don't take a left turn onto Pemberton between four-thirty and seven-thirty."
Yeah, you should see the amount of tickets they've gotten for that.
There are four cars in line waiting to make that turn onto Pemberton. And you're thinking, when you're on Route fifty, you're trying to figure out exactly how you're going to maneuver Pemberton or Nanicoke Road because of that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but we can't get any radar out there to catch a few of them coming down our road. But they do, they sit out there and they catch them going down Pemberton, because people don't see the sign.
We appreciate, we'll pass this on very thorough. We appreciate what you've done, and we'll pass it on and be in contact with you.
I'm trying.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public comments and council comments.
I'd like to say something. We had a moment of silence for a colleague, former colleague, Dave McLeod. I served with Dave for four years. Best description I could use for Dave was that he was a gentleman. We didn't always agree, we always got up, shook hands, laughed about, you know, our conversations, and he'll be missed. I'm sure his family will miss him. He was a very good fellow. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Holliday. Any other council comments? Seeing none. Entertaining motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the Local Government Article, Section three dash three oh five B, three, seven, and fourteen, as follows, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose to protect the county's borrowing power, to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiation strategy, as public disclosure may adversely impact the ability of the county to participate in a competitive bidding or proposal process, to consult with legal counsel, to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and administrative closed session pursuant to Section three dash one oh four to discuss the county internal auditor's project updates. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Meeting is adjourned. First item we have this morning is the animal ordinance. Mr. Taylor, I think we're getting close, if not there. I know we have members of the committee here, we appreciate everything you've done, we appreciate you being here today. Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor, will let you take the lead?
Well, I can do this in a couple ways. I can give you a general discussion of what we've done since this bill was originally introduced, and if you'd like, I can hit some of the high spots. As far as the general process of, as what has happened since it was introduced, primarily, Ms. Hurley and I have done a lot of review and revision and addition. We have done a cleanup and a clarification of various provisions. We've also done a broader review and revision. We've looked at other jurisdictions in terms of their ordinances. We've looked at various organizations that suggest provisions or, in some cases, actual ordinances. And when I talk about other jurisdictions, that would be both in Maryland and elsewhere, because this is essentially a common problem throughout the country. Just in Maryland, for example, you have three basic types of animal control ordinances or administration. The first is like ours, primarily in smaller and rural counties where it's essentially farmed out to the Humane Society. Other counties have it as part of their county government, and it can be a department, a separate department, it can be a division within a department. At least one county that would be hartered, it's done by the Sheriff's Office. We've also, when we had a draft in semifinal form, we discussed it with Mr. Balsamo and referred it to him, and as I understand it, he has reviewed it to some extent with his folks. He can speak to that later as he desires. And we've also run it by Mr. Leslie. So, and we've incorporated, I think, their comments in some cases. So that's kind of a general procedural view as to what's happened the last several months. Some of the high spots, and I'm just going to hit a few high spots, we have added the Sheriff's Office as an animal control authority. There's no intention that they would take it over from the Humane Society, but I think as recent events have kind of indicated, it makes sense to have them with animal control authority, authority. We have added references and quotations, extracts from state law provisions. We found that the state law is, just like our animal ordinance, is somewhat complex. It's basically contained in two different parts of the state law. There is some in the local government article that pertains to the local governments, directs them, authorizes them to do things. Then in the criminal law article, there is a fairly extensive listing and statutes that involve animal cruelty, dangerous dogs, and various other things that apply broadly to animal care and treatment. And we thought that it would be wise to have this in the county ordinance because we believe that that's where most people would look first, to try to find out what the animal control law is within a particular county jurisdiction. And of course, the state law applies within the county jurisdictions. Most people, I don't think, are real familiar with the state code, you can get it online, but I think by and large, they would look to the county law first. For vaccination and rabies, that's a matter entirely of state law, and we have reflected it that way, using the state law provisions. Licensing, that is, that is a local matter, there's state authority for it, but it is a local matter, and we have changed that slightly, not a whole lot. We have added a reference to a state law provision that says that the owner of a licensed dog, it's the person, the dog is the personal property of the owner. Kind of stands to reason, I think, but nevertheless, that could be significant in terms of some of the other provisions in the ordinance. There is a dangerous dog ordinance, as I say, in the state law. We've also kept and modified to some extent the dangerous dog law that is in the local ordinance. It does get a little complex, but the state law applies, of course, anyway, so we can't avoid what the state law provisions are that are there in the ordinance. However, our ordinance is somewhat different, and ours is a civil ordinance. In other words, the penalties in ours are civil, not criminal. The state law is a criminal ordinance, so there's a difference in that regard. In our local provisions, we have added something that has been recommended by various groups in terms of the conduct of a dog, what causes the dog to be deemed dangerous, and that is a, an exemption that would apply in certain circumstances where the dog or other animal is contacted without the authorization of the owner, or it's contacted where the animal is eating, sleeping, or otherwise would not be anticipated being touched or petted. Because, at least in my experience, maybe yours too, I know when I was a kid, I got a couple of dog bites under those types of circumstances. Now, we have added, partially as a result of Mr. Leslie's suggestion, that if the dog engages in a sustained attack, then that exemption doesn't apply. In other words, if you touch a dog, it's sleeping, and nips at you when he wakes up, that's one thing. If it gets up and attacks you and keeps biting you, that's a different thing. So that's, that's an item that we've done. You may recall that when this came up before, there was some discussion about the required sheltering of animals, particularly during hot or cold weather, and we've spent some time on that. We found a recent Baltimore County ordinance that was passed this past winter as a result of a dog freezing to death, and they amended their animal control ordinance with something to address that. It's called Oscar's Law, if you follow Baltimore County legislation. Oscar was the name of the dog. It uses thirty-two degrees and ninety degrees as a kind of a threshold point. There is no automatic requirement that a dog or other animal be brought inside when it either goes below thirty-two or above ninety, but there's a variable standard. And what it provides is that, under those circumstances, if it goes below or above those two temperatures, if a reasonable person would reasonably conclude that it would pose an adverse risk to the health or safety of the animal based on its size, age, physical condition, or thickness of its hair or fur, and that's language right out of the Baltimore County ordinance, then, under those circumstances, if a reasonable person would conclude that there's a risk, then it has to be sheltered. There is also a general requirement that if an animal is not regularly kept in a home, there must be provided suitable shelter, and that's again out of the Baltimore County ordinance. Probably the most major change, in my opinion, would be the Animal Appeal Board, and just running through some of the things we've done there, or suggesting that we do, is that there would be no special members, and by that I mean having any status, being a member of a group. In other words, anybody could be a member. Now, the council and the executive can certainly select from groups that have special interests in animal rights and animal control. We're not saying that, we're just simply saying that there's no particular qualification by status. Still five seats, two alternatives, two alternates, pardon me. We have added due process requirements. We found in doing research that there is, we just recognized Animal Rights Week, and there is a growing animal rights movement, including, there are now cases around the country, sometimes they're called doggy due process cases, that extend rights that are somewhat similar to what we would see in a criminal or traffic procedure in district court, to decisions made for euthanization or dangerous dog decisions. We've provided that the hearings have to be quasi-judicial in nature. I think, I've not been to one, but I think from what I've heard, that they're probably pretty much quasi-judicial now. I don't think we're adding a lot to that, but it would require that there be testimony under oath, a keeping of a record, and that the decision be made based on the testimony that's presented at the hearing, and not what I would call ex parte communications, and that is when the members of the board go out and talk to people outside of the hearing, and then say, well, when they come time to make a decision, well, when I talked to so-and-so, he or she said this. And I think just parenthetically, that's something we might want to actually add in there, that it should not be based on ex parte communications. We have not said that, but I think that's a significant matter. We've provided that the burden of proof will be on the animal control authority. The feeling being here that if someone is going to euthanize your dog or essentially take it away from you, that the decision on appeal, the animal control board should present a clear and convincing case. I don't think that's going to add a whole lot of difficulty. It does prevent an animal control officer coming into the hearing and just simply saying, "Based on what people told me, I think that this is a dangerous dog." In most cases, the animal control officer is not going to have seen any of the activity of the dog that resulted in someone claiming that it's dangerous. So I think when it gets to the hearing level, that the witnesses should be there and give testimony. I think that'll serve some purposes that I think will be beneficial generally to the county as well as to the, to the dog owners, and that is that only strong cases will be presented, and if they are challenged, they probably will, the animal control authority will have developed a record that they can present to the animal control board, the appeals board, that will carry the day. I think it will also result in less appeals to the circuit court, and that's significant because that's where the real expense comes when a dog is impounded pending these dangerous dog determinations. There is some expense initially and through the appeals board stages, that can be done fairly quickly, but if the owner appeals it into the circuit court, then the time, it's probably a factor of ten it's increased by. And it can be, go beyond the circuit court level, it could be appealed to Annapolis, that I don't think is fairly rare, but it can happen. So that you might be talking about impounding the dog for eight, ten months, possibly a year or more, if there were an appeal to the Court of Special Appeals in Annapolis. So I think that's, that's some of our thinking on doing this, these changes that I've just discussed with regard to the appeals board. Trying to get through the rest of it real quickly. We have changed to some extent the civil penalties, we've done some reduction of amounts, they seem to be extremely high for the nature of the particular infraction. And we've also introduced what I call staging, and that is that there would be an increase in the fines based on repeat offenses within a certain time period. We've used one year. We've used one year for a second offense, and then a third or subsequent offense after that, so that, we can call it staggered or staging. We also, I think, have adopted all of the council members' concerns that were expressed several months ago. I won't go over those, but I believe they're all, they're all in there. I hope so. I think Laura agrees with me on that. And that's quickly, hopefully maybe not so quick, an overview of, of all of this. I will add one thing, and that, based on our conversation I just had with Mr. Holloway this morning, I think there is a provision in our dangerous dog ordinance where we might want to change the timing slightly that an owner receives before his or her dog can be euthanized. And I can get into that when we get into that part of it, if you want me to, or do it now, but maybe the best thing to do is start, start at the beginning and go to the end.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Got a couple of comments. It wasn't just the dangerous dog, it was a dog that, you know, they had picked up, you know, any dog.
True, yeah, that's true, yeah.
But the part where you've included the sheriff's department, and you said that they were what now? The sheriff's department was going to be...
Well, they would have animal control authority.
Okay. Shouldn't that be local jurisdiction, I mean, like Town of Fruitland or Delmar? I know Salisbury's got their own animal control people, but you wouldn't send the sheriff's department into the Town of Delmar to take care of an animal control problem? Wouldn't that be the Delmar Town Police or the Fruitland Town Police? Should that not be changed to the local jurisdiction? You know, in the county, it would be the sheriff's department, so.
I, I think this would probably only apply in the, in the municipalities other than Salisbury.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. Shouldn't, shouldn't we, shouldn't they be responsible, their police departments be responsible for that instead of our sheriff's department, being they have police departments?
I don't, offhand, I don't know. I, I think maybe it's best to keep it within the sher, that's it, just my initial thinking right now, off the top of my head, it's based to, best to keep it right within the sheriff's department. But I'm, it's, it's your decision, not mine.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm just, you know, the sheriff's department seems to have enough to do as it is, you know, and the other towns have their own police departments, so.
Any questions? Director Passama, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I mean, the, Mr. Taylor pretty much covered anything. I mean, we've been, we've gone over this quite a few times together, so honestly, I just wanted to get input from any council members, if they have any questions for me, or for the committee members. You know, we can discuss anything that's still concerning. I know in the past, there's been concerns with language on certain issues and things like that, so I'm definitely open to any discussion, and as I'm sure the members that are here are open to discussing as well.
The seventy-two hour threshold for the adoption or euthanization, notification, I guess is the other word.
Okay.
That's in there. You know, if somebody's dog is confiscated on a Friday, or picked up on a Friday, and they can't get in touch with you, or for whatever reasons it could be during the week, I just think that's a pretty short time, you know.
Yeah, and if it's towards the end of the week and with a holiday, I've never seen anything in the writing, even with the old code that designated between business days and calendar days. I've always directed the staff of the Shelter and Animal Control to count it as business days, so weekends and holidays are excluded, because as you just said, I think it'd be, you know, if my dog was running at large and you picked it up, pretty unfair to me if, you know, Saturday and Sunday counted against me and I had to get in there Monday, or, you know, there was a holiday or something along those lines. So we've always done business days on it. When the animal comes into the shelter, one of the very first things we do is we scan it for a microchip. In case the animal has a microchip, we can look up the number and contact an owner. And then we take a picture, we place it on our website. And then, once that whole period is, is up, if no one's contacted us, or we don't have previous lost reports on that specific animal, once that whole time is up, then we begin to do the behavioral assessment to place the dog for adoption. If we do make contact with an owner, you know, we find a microchip, and on day two, we're able to make contact, then we start those three days back over all over again, is how we've, is how we typically do it.
Well, I think maybe we need to include language. I know that's what you do, but you might not always be the director.
Yeah, and I mean, yeah.
You know, this is the law we're writing, so I think we need to make it very clear.
Yeah, if we wanted to add in, you know, specifically that it's business days.
Yeah. I'd rather, I'd like to see it a little longer than seventy-two hours. I think sometimes that's, could be, you know, a pretty short time for somebody, but that's the opposite.
So do you put a discretion, or...
Pardon me?
Do you put a discretion?
No, I think it needs to be...
The state minimum is seventy-two hours from the time of pickup. Anything beyond that, and every county law I looked up, or Shelter Animal Control Agency I talked to, it's kind of a mess. Some are seven days, some are five days, some are the three-day minimum. It, it really, it's kind of up in the air.
So you, so people do do five days?
Yeah, there, there has been five days I've seen. I think, I forget what county it was, but I think I saw seven days in there somewhere. And then, you know, a lot of them do stick with the minimum of the three days, but...
Be more comfortable with a five-day?
Five business days.
Five business days.
Business days.
That's my sound.
Okay. I think that's something we can put in.
Okay.
Before this comes up for the first reading.
Yeah, this is a recommendation for, for a change, so let's make sure we...
How do we feel about the, the sheriff's department and the animal authority? Mr. Culver's in here, what do you think that's...
Well, I mean, they're called usually, if it's a dangerous animal, they're always called out to it most of the time. Like you said, they've got a lot on the plate right now.
Yeah, but we're talking about if it's in the Town of Fruitland or the Town of Delmar, shouldn't they be calling their police departments in that, in that case?
They probably would be, will they enforce their county ordinance?
Well, typically, when we get a call in Delmar or Fruitland, if the calls come in through nine-one-one or the sher, or the police department directly, we're called out with Fruitland or Delmar. If animal control has an issue that, you know, they know the owner's going to be combative or something along those lines, and we're in Fruitland, we call Fruitland PD, and we're in Delmar, we call Delmar PD. We don't call the sheriff's department first.
Is this saying the sheriff's department should be called, the way this is written?
Well, it's to give them animal control authority. It, it doesn't prevent what the process he's now using.
Yeah, my, my understanding of the, what's written in here giving them the authority would be, you know, I have my two animal control officers, if one's on vacation, and I have an officer that's out in Willers, and there's a call, in Annacoke, and a sheriff's officer, or sheriff's deputy happens to be there, then he would have the authority, you know, if it's a dog running at large, he would have the authority to issue a citation for that if he's there, as opposed to waiting, you know, half hour, forty-five minutes for my officer to get across the county.
Is, is there special training required for the sheriff for animal control?
Um, no, I imagine there would need to be, if it's citations, they would just need to be familiar with it. Training for animal control can be sporadic as it is, with getting training dates and things like that.
I just wanted on the record that we don't have to share, send the sheriff's deputies to school to...
Yeah, no, I wouldn't recommend them.
To school, to...
I wouldn't recommend them to go. After-hours calls, and emergency calls, you know, weekends and nights, I mean, the sheriff's department's with us most of those calls anyways, so.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a comment?
Just very briefly, as far as the content of the changes, most of it I have no problems with. I'm involved with this in the nitty-gritty quite a bit with Aaron.
Good.
Need to introduce yourself.
Sorry, Roscoe Leslie, working Paul Webber's office, county attorney. One of my biggest issues is more, is a lot of formatting. Some of the state law provisions that have been incorporated are kind of just cut and pasted into this, and there's some inconsistencies with the terminology throughout the ordinance. It's unclear about what definition applies here, what definition applies there. I'm not even sure whether, as Mr. Taylor said, it's already state law, I don't know if we need to incorporate it. We don't incorporate state law in, you know, all these other things that are applying. I'm not sure if we have to do it here. So I just worry about the repetition and inconsistencies of terms, like for instance, the dangerous dog provisions are in here, and then there's, we have a dangerous animal provision, so it's, there's different, almost the same content in two different places in the code now, and I'm not sure how that's really going to work out. So I think some thought needs to go through, looking at the document and making all the terms consistent throughout the document. There's just some definitional things I don't quite understand. And the other thing, they did mention how they, the, the exception on no animal may be declared potentially dangerous or dangerous if the injury was sustained by a person who was touching or petting the animal without the express permission of the animal's owner while the animal's asleep or in a condition or action which is not normally touched, is eating, drinking, engaging with offering, playing, growling, barking, sick, injured, et cetera. And they added the sustained attack, but this is an exception that you can, you can drive a truck through. So, and this along with the clear and convincing standard at...
What page do you have?
Eleven, I think, of my copy, I'm not sure if that, I don't know if that, I kind of made it all small caps, so.
Okay.
And again, I think they did make some changes that said it had to be a sustained attack, but I still think it's a very large exception. That, along with the clear and convincing standard at, at the Animal Appeal Board, rather than a preponderance of the evidence standard, you're basically going to have, it's going to be really, really, really difficult to have a dog declared potentially dangerous or dangerous. And if that's what the council wants, that's fine, I just want to make you guys aware that it's going to be, it's a very, very hard standard to prove now, and to, this exception, playing, touching, et cetera, is, is very broad, so I just want to raise that issue.
What page is it on?
Twenty-eight, I think it's.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, yeah.
Okay.
Are, are there any other issues that you're concerned about, Mr. Leslie, that have not been addressed?
Yes, the state law stuff, the inconsistencies, terminology here and there, those are the big ones. There's, there's other little things that I've, I've shared with them, but those are the ones that I, I thought were the most important.
My, my question is, and my concern is, before we do a work session on it, shouldn't these items be resolved when they're brought to us?
Could you give us an email with those? Could you send us an email with your concerns?
Sure.
Mr. Leslie, I have a question too, if you'll mind. Your, an email would help for, if you could, but it sounds to me like you're almost suggesting that thirty percent of this document is, needs to be reworked. From what you were saying, it sounds like there's a great deal that you're suggesting may need to be reworked.
Well, again, it's the, the content, I, mostly I don't have a problem with, it's more nitty-gritty formatting. The most content, I think I raised, is the, is the dangerous dog provision, those are the ones that, again, if that's what you guys want, if that's what the, you want the policy to be, that's up to you. I just want to make you aware of what I, how I think it'll turn out. I think it's just going to be very difficult for animal control to declare a dog, to have it bound dangerous. Everybody will appeal, and everybody will win the appeal.
Well, under, preponderance of the evidence is what, about fifty-one percent?
Right.
And what's clear and convincing?
It's more like you're seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent.
Right, is that, is fair?
It's fair, yeah. And we, and we toyed with this, the two standards, but I think if you were taking somebody's property away from them under these circumstances, I think clear and convincing, and I don't think it's frankly that hard to meet if there is a real situation with a dangerous dog and a witness.
Preponderance of evidence is a standard civil. You know, we, we entered this back in oh-seven, I believe it was, you know, when a child got hurt in Willers. So there's a big difference in two dogs dragging a child off a bicycle and mauling him, just about killed him, and somebody walking up to a dog that's asleep, petting him, and, you know, the dog wakes up and snaps at him and gets some fingers or whatever. So, you know...
Well, generally, the, the way it's set up is potentially dangerous is the, you get your one free bite, and then if it happens again, then it moves up to, to dangerous. But I think this is still, you can't be declared potentially dangerous if you're, yeah, you can't be declared potentially dangerous if you're, if it's just the, the nymphs. So that's, usually, it's the one bite rule is what the, what the, what it is right now. It's like, you, you get one free bite, and then...
Well, on that, you know, the, you know, with, you know, with the drinking, playing, blah, 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 you know, it has, you know, sick, injured, et cetera. If we took out the et cetera, would that...
Well, I mean, barking, playing, I mean, what else is a dog going to be doing besides those things?
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah, this, the, let me just add to that, I mean, this, this is to distinguish between the situation where a dog just runs up and attacks someone.
That's what I was trying to...
Yeah, I mean, these, these are situations where essentially you shouldn't be touching someone's animal. And I, I don't think that it's, you can drive a truck through it, through it, I mean, any of this dangerous dog provisions are subjective to a fairly significant extent. I mean, what exactly is a dangerous dog? But I think this is a very reasonable exception, and we have added that if a sustained attack results, then that exception would not apply.
If you could email us with what your suggestions are.
And one other thought I had on this, because probably, my guess is, maybe there'll be other comments that perhaps Mrs. Hurley and I will have to sit down again on, as perhaps we could sit down with Mr. Leslie and do that. I mean, that would be just a thought.
Yeah, I, I would agree.
Yeah. Might save him having to write the email.
I guess the question I would have too is, has the sheriff's office been brought into this as far as representative to discuss?
Not by us, no.
No. Because I think it's going to be very important, if you're going to put anything in here in reference to the sheriff's office, they, they need to know what their involvement might be in, whether it's licensing or whether it's enforcement. I think they, they need to recognize and give you feedback on what their obligation is, and their ability to fulfill that obligation or not.
Is it any different than what we're doing now, other than you're putting it into the law? I mean, you're calling them anyway, correct?
Yeah, the biggest difference would really be giving them the ability if they're, you know, they see a dog running down the road and it runs back to somebody's house, you know, it's given them the clear-cut authority to write that running at large citation on the spot, as opposed to calling us and telling us, hey, I saw this dog running at large. And then it brings up the issue of us writing a citation for something that we didn't actually witness, um...
But it's giving them the authority and the responsibility. So I mean, I'm, I just don't want to create this thing where someone says, well, I called the sheriff's department, they told me to call animal, you know, control, and, and it all gets, starts going back and forth again.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I, and that's, I know, they know that I've been, you know, that we've been working on the laws, but they haven't brought in, been brought into the fold about a, or as far as I know, they haven't been asked about this part actually being written in.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions regarding this? We are going to have to have another work session in reference to when Mr. Leslie sends his information to us, and I would hope that after that, we would be able to wrap this up, because I know it's, it's gone on for quite a, quite a while.
Yes.
It's been carefully reviewed, but I think it's about time we did wrap this up.
It's better take time than have it written.
That's true, very true. But we'll, do you think another work session in two weeks is enough time?
I, I would think so. I, I think in the, in the meantime, as I say, I think it might be wise for us to, we have, had, had, has, we have had some comments here today by the council, by Mr. Leslie, for Ms. Hurley and I to sit down, perhaps with him, and I think, as I say, that would perhaps keep him from having to send an, an email. We can certainly go over item by item. And also, if the council members have any comments, I mean, this is a long ordinance.
Sure.
And if you all would, if you have anything you haven't said and think about, let us know. I mean, I think maybe that meeting could be early next week, wouldn't you think, Laura?
Sure.
Okay. We'll put on, we'll put on the schedule for two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, I don't know if any of the committee members have anything they want to add on to it or not, but...
I do. Why don't you come out there?
Well, you need to get, you need to have a mic.
And the, and the wards won't reach back then.
Just state your name and...
Crystal Wymer, and I'm on the committee. Can you all hear me? It's good, okay. Um, I don't have the laws in front of me, but... Um, I don't have the laws in front of me, but Mr. Taylor was referring to earlier about the, a reasonable person could, would conclude with like the weather conditions and the shelter conditions on whether to seize a dog. And it talks a lot in the laws about unsafe and unsanitary conditions. And I was thinking that maybe that could be very subjective, you know, on what an unsafe or an unsanitary condition could be to me or to an animal control officer. And that could be completely different to a neglectful owner. So I was wondering if maybe the unsafe and the unsanitary condition could be defined under the definition section? Hold on, I'm sorry, let me look through my emails here, 'cause I'm sorry, I don't have my laws in front of me, but it could be something like, the verbiage, like I said, is unsafe or unsanitary conditions is in there often. And maybe it could say something like, under the definition, that an officer should reasonably conclude would pose an adverse risk to their overall health and safety. Because again, I think it could be very subjective as to what, you know, Aaron or his officer or I would consider unsafe or unsanitary and what, you know, an owner would consider unsafe or unsanitary. So I just think it's very vague. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I might, might just add one other thing. I think rather than saying that, that an officer would consider it to say a reasonable person, because that really should be the standard.
But who's a reasonable person? 'Cause wouldn't, I mean, it could be different from.
Well, the, the problem is that the average person isn't going to know what an animal control officer might think. That could be, that could be variable as well. So you can't, you can't avoid the variability.
Well, the reasonable person standard is pretty common in law.
Yeah, and that's very common.
That's what's used throughout our law in terms of what happened, so that's, it's not.
So the officer would be the reasonable person?
It'd be up to the, ultimately the judge.
If it were appealed, it would be up to the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
But it would be enough for an officer to seize a dog if they thought that the animal was in an unsafe or unsanitary condition? I guess is what I'm saying. Like, how do you know if the, whose decision is it for, you know, somebody to conclude that an animal is in an unsafe condition to seize it?
Is there any reason to create that definition, to have a more specific definition?
I would, as I say, I would use the reasonable person standard because that's very common. And it, it, it at least is something where, there, I understand you can differ about what a reasonable person would think, but nobody's gonna know what an animal control officer would think. I mean, that's also up in the air.
An animal control officer is considered a reasonable person.
And I, and I think if it were appealed, the judge would probably tend to, to go to the reasonable person standard. So I think that ought to be upfront.
I mean, if you had a husky that was outside ninety-five degree weather unprotected, I mean, that's obviously unreasonable.
Right.
Whereas if husky was, you know, in thirty degree weather, it might be, you know, it's because of the way the dog is. So I think, you know, you have to have some sort of leeway with the different types of dogs and things like that. I think that standard might be able to capture that, so, yeah. I mean, but it's not, it, it's not the neglectful owner standard. I mean, you know, I mean, I think that.
But because it's not in the, in the verbiage, I mean, isn't that up for, wouldn't that be up for debate then?
Yeah, I mean, if they wanna appeal it, but I, I think if you have a judge who's a reasonable, you know, the judge would say, look, it's clearly not reasonable to leave a husky out in ninety-five degree weather, you know, you know, in the direct sunlight, you know, for hours on end, even if the neglectful owner says, oh, that's what I always do. You know, I mean, I think it's, I mean, most legal cases come down to what a judge, you know, says, you know, regardless of what you think, you know, the judge makes the decision, so, or the appeals board, I guess.
Yeah, at some point, a judge will make the precedent on it.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand what you say, because I, I'm, I'm of the same nature. Please do me a favor, make it really crystal clear.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, when it comes to those type of definitions, it could be across the board. There are a million different interpretations, such as Councilman Kilmer suggested. So many different types of dogs that, that all require different standards, possibly, and same with circumstances. So I think what they try, they sort of punt, and the default is the reasonable person, and they allow that, that one element to be in there, I think, to cover the bases. Because if you try to get too specific, you may give too many reasons for them to work around that legally.
I think we run into the same thing with code enforcement a lot of times. You know, what's standard, one person's standard of living is not another person's standard of living. You know, and that's very hard to define, you know, in, in code enforcement, you know, as far as people, the way they keep their yards or they keep their houses or inside or out. So it's, it's pretty tough to define that.
And it comes down to the same argument that Councilman Kilmer said, if it's a husky or if it's a dog that's, you know.
Well, I think they know, I mean, the animal control officers know.
Right.
I mean, I know that they're the reasonable person, but I just, I just didn't know if it was.
Well, well, when it comes before, I mean, the judge or animal control board or whatever would listen to those, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, take the expertise into account and those sort of things.
But it's enough for them to, the animal control officer to seize the dog at, for, I mean.
Or issue a citation or, or whatever the penalty is.
Yeah, I mean, depending on the severity of it, whether we go with something civil in here or whether we would go with a state charge, but.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, I think it would be, yeah, to give them enough leeway to do that. Then if people say, no, that I disagree with that, then they go up to the board or a judge, and then the judge says.
The unsafe and the unsanitary conditions, I mean, that's up to them on what it is. 'Cause there's, that's used so much in the, in the proposed laws that you just didn't know if it should be defined or, you know, so the owner wouldn't, it wouldn't be up for debate.
I see what you're saying, but I, I think what they're trying to suggest is that by, by bringing in the reasonable person here, it's a catch-all.
And that's what it's gonna get to court, correct?
Yeah.
So possibly, if an animal control officer approaches a residence and somebody's keeping an animal in an unsafe or unsanitary condition and they bring it to the people's attention and the thought of having to go to court or the, you know, the threat of a fine, they're, they're gonna improve the conditions pretty rapidly, I would think, for the most part. There might be an exception out, I'm sure you, I'm sure you run into those exceptions, but for the most part, I think, I've had some experience, you know, complaints and you go to somebody's house, you know, and their dog's out there and you complain to them, and most time they take care of it, but, so.
But this gives your officers enough leeway to do what you think they need to do to protect the dog?
I feel it does. We take pictures when we go to, when we seize any animal, we, we take pictures. We take an abundance of pictures. Because if we write a citation or we file a criminal charge, either way, if a person challenges it and it goes to court even for just a ticket, they, they wanna fight the ticket 'cause they don't wanna pay the fifty dollar fine, you know, the burden of proof is on, as far as I'm concerned, the burden of proof is on us to tell the judge, you know, this is why we took it. And, you know, at, at that point, it really falls on the judge to either agree with us or disagree with us.
So what I guess we're saying here is that even though it's, it gives the appearance of being somewhat vague, Mr. Taylor, it would, it would hold up in court, correct?
Yeah, I, I, and let me add that I, the Baltimore County Council went through the same type of discussion on that Oscars law that I mentioned. And, you know, what should the standard be and who should be the determiner, I guess I would say. And they came up with the reasonable standard, which is typical. Courts probably would look a little bit of stance at if you just said the animal control officer can make the decision, decision based on whatever criteria he, he or she deems to be applicable. I mean, that's called arbitrary and capricious, and oft, oftentimes, that type of a decision will get shot down in court. And that's another reason why the reasonable person standard tends to be the one that's used.
Okay, yeah, okay. Any other suggestions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this.
I'm good till next time.
Okay, so, any other questions, comments?
No, I think we'll, we'll get together hopefully next week, Laura and I, Roscoe. If Aaron would like to come, that would be fine too.
Great.
And see if we can hammer out something for either another work session or first reading.
All right. Thank you, thank you everyone, thank you very much. Excited on the agenda is the City of Salisbury Folk Festival update, Caroline O'Hare from the City of Salisbury. How are you? All good news, huh?
All good news, of course.
If you could state your name, your, your position for the public.
Of course. My name is Caroline O'Hare and I am the local manager for the National Folk Festival. Julie Glan, City Administrator, City of Salisbury.
Were you just next door?
I was, getting work done. So you've asked for an update, is that correct?
Yes, great, yes.
We have a few milestones that have come up recently, so I'd like to share those with you. Our entire folk life program has been announced. It includes all the demonstrators and artists that will be in the Tressapique Traditions Folk Life area. That is quite exciting. We have satellite parking agreement made with Salisbury Mall Associates. We're working with them on that agreement to finalize it, but it is moving along. That means that we have satellite parking at the Civic Center, which has about thirteen hundred spaces, a little under that, with the additional parking from Salisbury Mall Associates. That's an additional thirty-five hundred parking spots. Plus, we've been offered the parking lot near Lavinale, which is another five hundred, which gives us about five thousand extra parking spaces at our satellite parking lot. That also helps us with the, around a thousand parking spaces downtown and in the downtown area that we have. So that's shaping up pretty, pretty good.
So satellite parking is where they park off location and will, they'll be shuttled in, is that correct?
That is correct. They'll have free shuttles running in thirty minute cycles, running every ten minutes, dropping off right at the festival footprint. We are working with Shore Transit on that. They are planning to run an hour before and up to an hour afterwards. I'm sure though, that, that will probably extend a little bit as needed. Another update we have is that all marketplace vendors and food vendors have been selected. We'll roll out that announcement next month of who those artists and food vendors are.
Come hungry.
Come hungry, exactly, and, and come ready to shop. We have reached eighty percent of our fundraising goal, which is right on track with where we want to be. Let's see, volunteer shifts have been launched and co-coordinators have been announced. The coordinators lead the eight hundred plus volunteers. Shifts are up, so now people can sign up for the exact job they want, the day they want, and the time they want. Let's see, Artists in Schools Program. We have an Artists in Schools Program where we will bring approximately a dozen different artist groups into our public school system in Wycomico County. That is funded by a private foundation and that will service close to five thousand public school students, the majority of them being between K through eight.
If I could just jump back to the volunteers, we do need eight hundred plus volunteers, so any help in that would be great. We've already seen a tremendous signup, we're working with United Way on that. But any of your networks or folks watching at home, please go to United Way and you can sign up for many different shifts for any number of interests that you might have on the festival, but we'd love the support.
What type of volunteers?
That's a great question. Actually, that's something I did wanna ask for you guys, for your help with. We are looking for a variety of jobs. They can be from more low-key jobs where it's sitting at a desk, festival desk or at an information booth, to more hands-on with site prep or driving around in golf carts with ice and water distribution, working in the family area with families for make and take crafts. There's a variety of jobs and responsibilities you can sign up for a couple of hours or for all three days. And if you go to shoregetconnected.org, you can find out all those descriptions. I brought volunteer cards for each of you so that you can share that with your community and your network. And we'd love for you guys as well to volunteer because you are the face of our county and, and that show of public support is quite incredible and, and would be quite valuable. So I'll have these for you guys to take afterwards. And finally, as far as a milestone, we have our final list of performers being announced next week. I believe the day we are shooting for is Tuesday, so that will mean that all our performers will have been announced.
Election Day.
Of course it's election day. We might, we might, we might push that a little bit then. Thank you.
You all will be pretty busy out of it.
You might be. I did wanna talk about the current support from the county. We have had very strong support from Wycomico Tourism. They have been invaluable with their out-of-market, marketing grant that they obtained as well as guidance in getting us out of Delmarva and into the Hilly area and whatnot promoting this festival as a state event, which is what it is. We've also had a, a good partner with the Parks Department, especially with our family area. We have some incredible family area make and take crafts activities, storytelling, things that will be free for our younger attendees. And the Parks Department has come with some wonderful ideas and it will enrich our community and I am thankful for their support. Another show of support from the county is Wayne Strasberg has been part of our executive committee. I thank him for coming to those meetings when he can. And then they, the county has also offered to lend us about twenty bike rack barricades, some fence stakes, I think one to two dump trucks and two golf carts. But as the planning for our festival continues, our needs evolve and continue, so we're still reaching out for certain things. The free things, of course, are what we had mentioned, that public show of support, communicating to your communities, to your constituents, to your friends, your colleagues. When you spread the word, they spread the word. Also, helping with advertising for the festival, if there is any way through social media, that would be fantastic. Helping spread the word about volunteers, like we talked about, that's incredibly important. Volunteers are the lifeblood of this festival. Now that we have satellite parking, we're looking for additional light towers, approximately four of them, so that is a safer environment or is, just that will have to happen, those will be there. Any additional road closure equipment, generators, fuel truck, flatbed trailer, and, and traffic reports on the days of the festival so that we can better understand the traffic flow and how we can improve on year two and moving forward. We'll be reaching out to the county with these requests and see if they can help in that area. But they have, they have been supportive in, in, in the areas I mentioned and, and we greatly appreciate that.
Good.
Last time you were up, you were here, I asked about coordinating with the Sheriff's Department for the help. Have you had any interaction with them?
Absolutely.
Are they supporting this and gonna work with you on it or?
Yes, we've spoken with the Sheriff's Department. I actually sat down specifically with Captain Wilson and First Sergeant Alison Dreamy, sorry. And they've also been invited to safety planning meetings. And Chief Duncan is also in talks with Sheriff Lewis about assisting in coordination. Also in addition, you had asked about Maryland State Police. They've also been included in our safety planning meetings. You had also asked about other types of support, federal support, I believe you asked about FBI and whatnot. I wanted to let you know that we are working with the Department of Homeland Security, assisting with event analysis and assessment for law enforcement. This means that we are, and I, I, this means that we have a strong number of public and private partnerships that are working here regarding our safety. The NFF is taking advantage of different federal as well as state level partnerships that have experience with large-scale events. One thing that you had mentioned before was bomb sniffing dogs. And that worked with great success at the marathon, so they will be employing similar methods just in that area, for example, for the Folk Festival.
Great, questions? We, we appreciate everything you're doing, this is, this is fantastic. The county does a lot of what it, everything it can do from, you know, recreation parks and tourism to try to bring huge events to this area. This is right up there at the very top, and this is gonna be huge, not, not only for Salisbury, but for Wycomico County. This is gonna be really big. And I'm just absolutely amazed as to how well organized everything is. So it's a credit to you and your organizations for how you're putting all this together. This volunteerism, I went online just to see how it worked. I thought, well, let me just type in United Way. And of course, there's a major link from United Way right to Get Connected. And so it is so simple for anybody to look here and you're not gonna get lost. And you have two pages of, with about, I guess, maybe fifteen different areas to volunteer. And it's very simple to, you know, to pick and choose what you might like to do, which I think is emblematic of how the whole project is running. So I think that's, it's a really good thing. And we appreciate you taking the time to, to be here and explain it to us. And we're looking forward to, to its success.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Give the mayor our regards.
You're welcome, thank you, he'll be back then next week.
Right. Right. I obtain a motion to adjourn from an open work session to go into a closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.